Tom is going to join us. He didn't say when. He said he would be late, though. So we'll begin. I'll start with good afternoon. My name is Frank Squillo. I'm the vice chair for the Manzanita Planning Commission. I'll be presiding over the land use hearing today. On a solemn note, our chairperson Karen Reddick Yurka will not be joining us today due to the recent loss of her husband. And on behalf of the planning commission board and the entire Manzanita community, we extend our heartfelt sympathies to Karen and her family. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of a request for a planned unit development for twenty-six single-family homes on South Third Street and Hallie Lane by City Center Development Partners. This hearing is now open. The decision to approve or deny this request will be based on the criteria in sections four point one three six, four point zero eight zero and three point zero two zero of ordinance ninety-five dash four and the comprehensive plan goal two related to the R three zone. The specific criteria are summarized in the staff report and will be reviewed at this hearing. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward this approval criteria or other criteria in the zoning ordinance which you believe may apply. Please note in their decision, we, the planning commission, may reject comments or ordinance citations that do not directly apply to the request. Note that an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, that must be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing of this case. Such issues must include specific statements or evidence that allow the commission and those in attendance an adequate opportunity to respond. This case will proceed with the applicant's presentation, followed by the staff report, those in favor of the request, and finally those opposed to the application. Commission, staff, and participants may direct questions to those who testified. And finally, the applicant will be entailed to a rebuttal. Generally, the applicant is entitled to twenty minutes to make their presentation. All other speakers should try to limit their comments to three minutes. Please avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it's perfectly all right to state that you agree with those statements of a previous speaker. If you've sent a written response to the proposal, please do not repeat your comments. They are already part of the record. Prior to the conclusion of the first hearing on the land use application, a participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, it will be up to the commission to determine if the hearing will be continued to a time and date certain or if the record will be kept open for submission of additional evidence or testimony. If the record is kept open, it will be for a minimum of seven days with a short rebuttal period thereafter afforded to the applicant. I now need to ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case.
Yeah, Frank, I do not see any hands up.
Hearing none, are there any objections to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case?
And again, I do not have any hands raised.
Hearing none, are there any declarations of conflict or bias, ex parte contact, or site visits by any members of this body? Phil?
Um, no conflict of interest, no bias, no ex parte contact, although I have visited the site and I have visited surrounding neighborhoods.
Thank you, Phil. John? Oh, you're on mute, John?
Pretty much like Phil. I've walked by the site for years. I've listened to the neighbors for years. Have no conflict of interest or uh any other reason not to participate.
Okay, thank you, John. Bert?
Uh, no bias, no conflict of interest, no ex parte contact, and I have been by the site many times.
Uh, same here. Self-declaration of no conflict or bias, no ex parte contact, site visits, and that's about it. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of the land use application hearing procedure?
Yeah, Frank, I do not see any hands raised.
Hearing none, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any member of the commission to hear this matter by reason of actual or potential conflict of interest or bias?
And again, no hands raised.
All right, hearing none, we are now ready to proceed. With the applicant, please introduce yourselves and give an overview of this proposed development to the commission. Thank you.
All right, so am I on Scott?
You are.
Or Frank? All right. I'm going to see if I can get the screen share thing to work. Let's see. We have a little presentation.
If you'd start by introducing yourself for those that may not be.
That's probably. Yep, um, my name is Jim Fanjoy. I'm the, your friendly neighborhood architect. I'm the principal of Veridian Architecture located in Haylam, Oregon. And I have a slideshow to kind of walk us through what this project's all about. However, my screen sharing is disabled. Scott, can you give me access? Scott is muted also.
Jim, I guess I'll share it. I think I.
Uh, are you able to?
Right now, Jim, we'll see.
Okay, he just turned it back. I got it. Okay. Thanks, Scott. Much appreciated.
There we go.
All right, you can see it, the hair and dress?
Yes.
Billboard thing? All right, so I'll start off by talking a little bit about our uh project team. Uh, Scott Imhold is the general contractor. He's present. Nate Palmer is the developer. He's also has the second home in Manzanita. Has been interacting with this community for quite a while. James Fanjoy, that's me. I lived in Manzanita for several years and now I live on Highway fifty-three in Haylam, and I've been practicing architecture in this area for over a decade. Brent Arndt is our transportation engineer for McKenzie. Andre Shernshaw is our engineer doing all the civil work. And Greg Hathaway is our lawyer. He also grew up in Tillamook County. I just learned a few minutes ago. And I'll be talking for most of the presentation, but these other people are available and I'll be referring specific questions to them throughout uh throughout the discussion or if you have any questions for them. Right, so starting off a little bit of background history. Uh, you should, all you have been by the site and are familiar with it, it was damaged in its tornado in twenty seventeen before we had access to the, before our team owned the property. And um, it's a unique site because it's the last large site in downtown Manzanita area and it's uh R three high-density zoning. Uh, our vision for the site is to kind of help balance out some of the homes' sizes that are in Manzanita. Um, smaller homes are a more traditional style of home in Manzanita, and that seems to have changed in the last ten fifteen years, so we want to kind of get back to that uh in this first edition. And it's also worth noting that there's a lot of housing complications in our county, and that's been going on for years and is only getting worse. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, the Senate passed House Bill four oh six, which specifically addressed housing statewide, but also focuses on Tillamook County. And it's worth noting this idea of middle housing, because we spend a lot of time talking about workforce housing. And I'm sure that's something that everybody, um, if they haven't heard about it, they've experienced it whether they've known it or not, because we have a shortage of service workers and so forth in Manzanita. I can remember when uh Marzano stopped having dine-in service probably because of that. It almost seems like they led the pack, and now it's, there's a shortage of serving people everywhere. But this housing shortage also applies to what they call middle housing, the missing middle, people who are not necessarily of upper income brackets, but are doing important jobs around our community, people like teachers and nursing assistants, folks like that. It's hard for them to find housing too. So although this project isn't specifically focused at the people in the middle, in the sort of lower end of the income bracket, it's signed as uh available to sort of a wider range of people, so we can get more people living in town. And then a final thing to note is that uh there was a wetland mitigation uh enacted on this site uh a year or two ago, and this site is certified as ready for development by the environmental concerns. So let's talk a little about the project. What we tend to do is place twenty-six cottage cluster homes on the site and have cooperative green space that's shared by all of them in a um in a sort of a cluster cottage community development. These homes are going to be fairly small, one and two-bedroom homes. Eleven of them will have garages and fifteen of them will share a small community parking area. These houses are going to be clustered around communal green spaces with shared amenities to present an attractive park-like appearance, both to people who are living there and people who are walking by the site. We're going to have community picnic areas uh in a building for the residents to share. We'll have a private drive that bisects the site that accesses uh the parking and the paths that go to the various cottages. And then we're going to have a homeowner's association to maintain the site with professional landscaping and um keep it all looking very nice. We're really excited about this. I am especially because we intend to incorporate green design features everywhere we can, and although the homes haven't been specifically designed yet, things that are on the, on the list are uh solar panels, improved insulation, passive solar orientation, um FSC certified wood if able. So there's a lot of things that we're looking at because we really want to make this a place that's not just better for the people that live there, but kind of better for the whole, the whole planet. So this is an aerial view of where the site is. This was taken before, uh, I think after they cleared the debris from the tornado, but it looks like based on the way the greenery is up, the houses to the north aren't there yet, so this is kind of an older photo. But you can see this red triangle is the subject property, the largest continuous piece of land left in downtown. Just north of it here is where they recently put in the six new structures uh about two years ago. And off to the east, we have Third Street and Hallie Lane touches the side on the west side. And then we have um existing older housing stock to the south. This is what we would like to do with the site. Uh, the idea is that we would have the twenty-six homes located throughout the site and surrounded by garden spaces and public greens with a, a driveway bisecting it with one-way traffic and angled parking off of the uh main drive-through. That parking is going to be for, is a general parking pool for use by all the cottages that are in the center of the cluster. And those houses that are along the outside will have driveways directly accessing the street. Um, the ones on the east will have access to Third Street, and the ones to the west will have a small frontage road that will access Hallie. Those units that are on the east and west sides of the site are going to have garages, uh which gives them two parking spaces, one in the driveway and one within the housing unit. Um, let's see here. This is some photos of some of the surrounding context. Uh, one of the things that we are hoping to do with this project is is nod to the traditional housing context of what sort of the older Manzanita was, as a beachfront community, uh small houses that are pedestrian-oriented, uh have materials that sensitively address the local context and roof shapes and dormers that, that feel like they belong here. So this is what we have as, as our neighbors now, and this is the sort of thing that we're looking at as examples of what our cottages might look like. This is a one-bedroom cottage and it's got um similar roofing materials and siding materials that would be familiar to people who have spent time walking around some of the older parts of Manzanita. This is the two-bedroom with the garage attached. Again, it's a pretty compact house, but they're having to keep a car. And um to do, to do. And similar sort of vocabulary of materials and forms that would inform the overall aesthetic of the project. Uh, there's been a lot of, we hired a traffic engineer to give us a traffic study, and he prepared a traffic impact analysis. And in order to prepare for that, he uh, because he conducted several in-person surveys at peak populated times, specifically July fourth and Memorial Day, lots of people in town. And by counting parking and doing a statistical analysis, he found that the reality supports a reduced parking ratio that is less than what is in the normal zoning ordinance. Um, normally we're required to have two, and the number that's actually supported by the statistical findings is one point four stations per unit. When we designed the layout for our site, we went with an interior parking lot because the idea was that we wanted to protect the neighbors from having to have a parking lot near their house and also put the lot in a place where it could be centrally accessed by the residents that are living within this new development. And then um that lot is in turn accessed by a private driver pass right through the center of the lot. This is, all of this is a way, our intent is to get as much green space as possible and reduce the amount of paved parking. Um, because everyone likes to have cars, but everyone likes green stuff even more. Um, let's talk about utilities and engineering for a little bit. We're going to be using city water and sewer. All of our storm model will be handled on-site with catch basins, infiltration chambers, and sediment basins. One of the primary ideas is that we do not let any stormwater exit the site um as surface drainage, and then it's contained, controlled, treated, and then sent out into the city system. Um, we know that there's neighbors on Edmond that have had water issues in the past, so we are dedicated to working with them and making sure not only that we don't contribute to any additional problems with their stormwater, but if at all possible, you want to help collaborate with them and work together to reduce that problem in a way that's a win for everybody. Um, as far as grading, um grading's going to come up. Most of the lot has already been graded, and we have topographical uh maps as part of our application. Um, one of the letters that came in yesterday addresses some of those issues, and we'll talk to those specifically in the comments section later on. This is the engineering drawing showing layout of the storm drainage system. And it's um basically referring to what I told you before about how it's all connected, and this is part of the presentation because we can drop back to this in the questions and answers session if um there's some specific technical questions that arise as a result of that. All right, maintenance and operations. It's important that if you're going to build something like this, it doesn't get shabby, so we established a homeowners association. And then we'll have independent parties that will be paid to maintain the communal areas and keep them looking sharp. Um, landscaping, right, individual homes can be maintained by the homeowners. We'll have our garbage and recycling area, as well as a large picnic shelter. Those will all be maintained, operated, and cared for by the HOA. And then we will have clear signage to let people know where the parking is. Something that's really exciting about this property and this project is that our built area is only twenty-two percent, and over half of it is landscaping, which all of you who have been on the planning system for a while should realize that's a pretty good set of ratios and is far above what's called poor by the ordinances. Um, an important part of this project's been collaboration with neighbors, and the developers had several meetings with um, open meetings with interested parties to get impact on what the neighbors' concerns are. It's important to us that we work with the neighbors because we want to, we want to be friendly neighbors, and we want to have a long-term um interaction with those neighbors in a way that's positive. So we talked with them about things that are concerns like open space, uh fencing, how we're going to be handling water flows, stuff like that. And this is an ongoing process. When people come up with new concerns, we want to address them. And the general feeling amongst this that we have been talking to is that people don't want to see excess unused parking, and they do want to see green space, which is in line with what our project goals are as well. Uh, because we're so close to Lenita and the downtown um merchant district, it's a great opportunity to have more walkable pedestrian space, and that will be continued to that, and also small homes are more in the character of what Manzanita always has been. And those two things work together. The smaller the home, the more the green space, the more open air. Um, it's just, it adds lots to the character of what Manzanita can be. Uh, there's, we have some fencing designed for the south side of the site because that was a concern of the neighbors on that side, so we've designed fencing that's attractive, but has been designed to allow passage of wildlife. And um, yeah, we're excited about that. And also, again, talking about how we're working to collaborate on stormwater issues and find solutions that will be to benefit everybody involved. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And now we get to do my favorite part, which is the question and answer session. Frank, if you would like, I can go back to the floor, or the site plan drawings, if you have something to look at, or I can stop the share, whichever you prefer. You're still muted.
We'll come back to questions after we've gotten a little further into this.
Okay, very good.
That way we don't get too far sidetracked. Uh, if, if that's it, Jim, then we'll proceed with the staff presenting its report on this proposal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, just one second. Uh, I see our other commissioner has joined us, Tom. Uh, welcome. Can you hear me, Tom?
I can't.
And I just need to ask you for the record uh if you have any declarations of conflict or bias, ex parte contact or site visits by uh yourself concerning this project.
None of the above.
Okay, thank you. And then Walt, are you uh doing the staff report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you're on, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, again, we're looking at an application for a planned unit development. Excuse me.
Walt, and for Walt, for those that don't know you, would you just introduce yourself and your title and your responsibilities?
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Walt Windoloski. I'm a contract city planner for the city of uh Manzanita.
Thank you.
Okay, um, this property contains one point eight three acres and is split zone between the R three and R two zones. Um, as you saw in the presentation, the applicant is looking at a twenty-six unit planned unit development. It's basically a single-family uh residential. Uh, it will include single and two-story homes, uh both one and two-bedroom. Uh, total, um, the layout again talks about uh thirty-seven parking spaces. There is open space in both the north and south side of the central uh driveway. And um again, there is a homeowners association that will be uh responsible for the site. I think the applicant layered out rather, rather succinctly here. Um, also, I think it's important to note the applicant submitted uh engineering and uh uh traffic reports that I think it's important for the planning commission to uh look at. Again, this is a split-zone property, R two and R three zones. The majority is zoned R three, which is the operative zone, if you will, for uh development. Um, the PUD standards are outlined in section four point one three six of our uh development code. Um, and that is uh the core of this application. Bear in mind, the applicant has intent to potentially subdivide the property in the future. We're not looking at a subdivision tonight, and I think it's important to recognize that. The sole request before the planning commission tonight uh is limited to the review of a conceptual plan for residential planned development with shared open space and parking. There will be a second hearing. If this is approved, there will be a second hearing uh to consider a final plan. At that time, the commission may consider a potential subdivision, including any modifications to the underlying uh development standards of the R three zone. For the record, if the applicant does not create individual lots as a PUD, state law still requires that a plat be submitted to uh locate each of the uh buildings. Um, let's see. Now, a PUD is permitted within the R three zone. Um, but the R three zone does not have design review requirements. For the record, the planning commission does have the authority to, as part of their decision, uh identify the location and of individual structures and also require the applicant to basically conform uh with this uh proposal. We did receive comments from various agencies. I'll just simply summarize that uh the site is fully serviceable, so there are no issues um or capital improvements necessary uh for this particular project. Again, the planned unit development provisions are found in section four point three one six under item one, that uh it outlines the provisions for a PUD and the purpose behind it. I think this is ideally a project or a poster child, if you will, for the PUD. It creates cottage cluster developments um while providing significant open space as well. I think that's entirely consistent with the purpose. Under item two, we have a variety of standards that must be uh applied to. Um, again, the zoning that applies is R three. The R three zone allows single-family homes, and this project is focused on single-family homes. Under item B, the developer may develop a a project with cluster developments, which is consistent with their proposal. Also, the density must comply with the comprehensive plan. Staff report details this a little bit more, but it comes down to this project can have no more than fifteen units per acre. In this case, that one point eight three acres. And since there is no public right-of-way dedication, all one three, one point eight three acres may be developed. Up to twenty-seven point four five units are allowed. The proposed calls for twenty-six, which is entirely uh within that limit. There is a bonding requirement that the commission may impose. For the record, this is just an option. Usually comply or applies to uh engineering requirements. Under I subsection three, we go through the procedures. I'll simply note that the application was submitted, deemed complete, and copies of the requests were sent to the commission and also shared by uh staff. Under three C is the sort of criteria for the planning commission uh to consider. There are six items here, and I'll begin with number one. Um, I don't think there is unusual topography that would force the issue of a PD. However, the type of development can only occur through the PUD process. That is cluster development of the housing and open space and shared parking. Item two, um, the development would, will not be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan provisions and zoning objectives. The ordinance ninety-five dash four implements the city's plan and appropriately zones the property R three, which allows residential development. Their proposal is therefore consistent with the intent of the underlying zone, which implements our plan. Uh, the item four is area development. Again, as the applicant shown, all the adjacent properties contain single-family homes, which this is consistent with the pattern. The only difference is the style of the home, basically, but still, we're looking at single-family homes. Item four is completion within a reasonable amount of time. The applicant, I believe, intends to develop this in a single phase. And I am recommending that if approved, that at least the final plan be brought back to the planning commission within two years. The item five is whether or not the streets are suitable for the proposed project. The uh traffic engineer supported uh material indicating that this would not have adverse impacts. Um, the staff report takes out a section of the summary. I'll just note effectively, the analysis concluded limited traffic generated by the development and in conjunction with available bicycling and walking alternatives does not significantly impact the local street system to where improvements are required. Um, I think the only improvement that was recommended is removal of some vegetation to improve the clear vision uh area. And one other note, any improvements along Third Street will be part of any engineering uh design uh requirements. The sixth item is uh proposed utility drainage facilities are adequate. Again, we received agency comments that this is the case. Under item three D, uh the commission simply notifies the applicant of the decision. This is procedural. Under uh three E is the next step where the applicant returns with a final design plan. Under F, the additional requirements the commission may place conditions. Staff has recommended conditions with regard to submitting a final plan. Under G, the approved plan will be identified on the zoning map. This is a procedural issue for the city to follow through with. And finally, H discusses building permits. Effectively, until this is plotted, improvements are in place. No building permits can be issued, and building permits that are issued must conform to the approved design plan. Under section three dot is zero two zero paren three covers the design standards for the R three zone. Um, again, at one point eight three acres, this certainly exceeds the five thousand square foot minimum limitation. Uh, I will note that the layout meets all the setback requirements of the underlying zone. The final height um will be determined through the building permit process. It may require an alteration of one of the side yard setbacks. And finally, the lot coverage is well below the fifty-five percent allowed within the R three zone. Okay, under three G, um, again, that's rear-end setback. I've discussed that. I've also discussed the lot coverage. Um, okay, finally, under three I, in areas with a high-water table, uh dry well may be required. Again, the applicant submitted information on potential storm plan. The applicant also clearly indicated they are working with the adjacent uh property owners to ensure that the um uh issues of storm drainage can be uh successfully uh addressed. It's interesting that the planned development process does not include specifics with regard to planning. Normally, that this particular project as single-family homes would require two spaces per unit for a total of fifty-two spaces. For a total of fifty-two spaces, they are proposing thirty-seven. Which works out to approximately one point four and a little bit. Um, they did submit an engineering analysis, which I'll just briefly summarize. They know that there are fifteen parking spaces in the center, appears to be designed primarily for those without a garage. Um, and they note that these units would not constantly be occupied, since they may be first or second homes. So that that level of parking is un- uh unnecessary. These are one and two-bedroom structures, approximately six hundred and fifty square feet or so. Uh, in area, and there was likely a less demand for um uh vehicles. Also, the location of the property, proximity to the downtown and the beach. I think most people will likely walk or bicycle to uh go to one of these areas, and again, lessens the need for vehicles. There was uh the applicant noted a uh traffic study or parking study by McKenzie Engineering. They identified in similar projects um a ratio of one. Point oh nine's uh vehicles per per unit um was was the uh results of that study. Also note that the I T E uh parking manual um. States a project of this type only requires zero point seven four spaces per bedroom. Now, even if they built out with all two-bedroom homes, maximum of thirty-eight point four eight spaces. They include, they indicate that there's going to be single-family homes here. So, uh, excuse me, single-bedroom homes, so certainly within this project. Um, they would only need two single-bedroom homes to to meet the standard within the code, so. That's certainly within uh the realm of the I T E study. I think on balance, this information indicates a reduction in the required part. Parking is warranted and um certainly encourage that. Um, and one other measure too is that, again, less parking, less permeable. Impermeable surface, more green space, and that benefits stormwater um as well. I think generally in this case, the basic layout establishes the framework for future development. Based on the cemented material and the layout, the proposal residential use is allowed. Buildings meet or exceed setback requirements, though the building height may need. We may require an increased side yard setback, I believe on the north side. Uh, further, the request to modify the parking space requirements, I think is um justified. Again, in this situation, the applicant needs to return with a final plan uh for the planning commission to consider. Uh, this would include if they desire a request to subdivide. But even with that subdivision needs to be reviewed on the plan development process. To modify the lot sizes, they're looking at lots ranging from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet. So there will be changes in that. So with that, it is certainly staff's recommendation that the planning commission approve the application. Uh, subject to the conditions of approval that are noted in the staff report.
All right, Walt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Walt, if if I've got this right, this is the second largest project to come before the commission, isn't it?
Uh, I'm only aware of one subdivision, I think someone else may have done another project, but. In terms of my tenure, yes, this is the biggest residential development.
Right, all right, well, thank you. Uh, as we continue, this portion of our hearing will be for questions from the commissioners to the applicant or to the staff. Which one of our commissioners has questions?
I I have a quick question, just almost, it's more of a bookkeeping question, but Walt, um. Scott um sent a letter to the applicant on February twenty-seventh. Stating the application was complete. Uh, subsequently, it was changed, and I think it may have even been a new application. Um, when does our hundred and twenty-day clock start ticking?
Oh, we're on the clock.
I know that, but when did it start?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No.
I can answer that, Walt.
No, thank you, Scott.
So the the initial application was deemed complete on the twenty-seventh of February. And the hundred and twenty-day clock is ends on June twenty-sixth.
Um. Since we're past halfway in, um, and the the uh. Well, maybe it won't matter, we'll see, I just.
We can talk about that if it gets to that point.
Yeah.
We then we have to have a decision by June sixth in order to allow the twenty-day appeal process to play out.
Was that a question, Scott, or?
I was just.
Like I was, that's a fact, right? Okay.
Fact.
Got it. Um. I have a question for the applicant, um. You said in your write-up that um. It's important, you you see the importance of uh mid-housing. To Manzanita and Tillamook County. Um. And I saw in several of the comments from the. Area residents that they would, um, and I myself probably would agree that um your parking. May, uh, your parking probably works fine for um primary residence and or second homes. Um, if there are any S T Rs in this development, it'll probably throw a bit of a monkey wrench in that. Um, because the two. Uh, the the two comments you get most from uh people regarding uh. Uh, S T Rs in the city are noise and parking. Uh, issues, so do you have any um? Plans in your C C N Rs, I assume you're going to do C C N Rs at some point. Um, are are you going to restrict S T Rs?
That's a, that's a great question, and the answer is, we're not going to restrict S T Rs, but we don't have to, because the city is going to do it inadvertently. Because there's a rule that says you have to have two parking spaces to have an S T R. And about half our units are only going to have, won't have the two parking spaces. So you know, there's the seventeen percent S T R cap that applies to the whole city, and that's going to apply to our property too. Of people who want to have a short-term rental, will need to get on the list and go through the whole process, everybody else, but in addition to that. If they have one of the units that that doesn't have two parking spaces, they won't be able to have a short-term rental. Not because of anything that we prescribe against it, but because of the city rules.
So basically, there's potential for one S T R. Which is seventy percent of the eleven that are going to have parking spaces.
I mean, yeah, unless like very, very weird.
Go, but.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like very strange happens statistically, yeah, this is going to have a pretty small impact on the S T R crowd.
Okay.
And there's also a possibility that if there's going to be a homeowners association, that they could decide that they would be no S T Rs.
But that that could be a theoretical possibility, we we don't have that as part of our plan, but that could theoretically be possible, it could get changed after this project starts too. Right.
Are any of the parking spaces in that fifteen, they're they're just going to be catch as catch can, right? They're not going to be assigned.
They are not going to be assigned, but they are going to be restricted to only residents, so, yeah, so, yeah, kind of a little of both.
How would we do that?
Uh, we're going to do a signage, um, well, I can bring up.
Yeah, because people call signs all the time.
Well, yeah, you do, you actually can. Uh, yeah.
You can always go, hey, it was posted.
Alright.
Maybe a decal or something like they do in some of the neighborhoods in the.
Yeah, we talked. Yeah, we talked about possibly doing, or or, yeah, like decals painted on the pa- paving surface. We're kind of open to whatever on that, I, the intent was to, it was to post it with signage. Um, yeah.
And Jim, you want to talk about the material choice on the parking too for permeability? And it's, it will look a little different than a standard parking.
Yeah, this might be a good place to talk about that, so you can see on the drawing that I just put up, can you guys see that, did they do it right?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so on the drawing that I just put up, this this parking area through the center. We haven't picked the final material yet, but we're looking at using uh brick pavers or a pervious parking, a pervious pavement system. To get better infiltration, make it look more natural, but that also has the nice side effect of. Uh, visually delineating that space as not part of the normal parking surface, so um, I I think it. It it it's a, it's a cultural barrier that would prevent uh people who are um transients from wanting to park in those spots. They they just, they will feel aesthetically like they're part of the 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 planned development, not part of the general parking pool at large.
Other questions?
Well, I have a, maybe this is a question that goes back to Walt, I didn't know if uh. Dan Wessel is on uh is on the Zoom. But I will ask Walt this question, was there any thought given to requiring? The developer to pave part of Hallie Street, or at least contribute to paving part of Hallie Street?
If I recall, I think the traffic analysis indicate that limited traffic. Um, I cannot recall the numbers, but it was like only a couple of cars per hour for.
Five to seven.
Okay, and just did not warrant an improvement on Hallie Lane.
I'm guessing the people that live on Hallie Lane would disagree with that, in fact, I have a letter that uh would probably back that up.
Yeah, I submitted a letter, I live at one nine eight Hallie Lane, I don't live there.
Yeah, uh, ha- hang on, we'll get to you.
Yeah, I I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bring someone else in, but.
That's okay, thi- this portion is for the commissioners.
Yeah, I I did see a letter to that effect, um. Uh, and I think it was mentioned in someone else's letter that um. Uh, but you're saying traffic. Does not warrant it? That, is that what I heard you say, Walt?
Yes, that is correct, and that's based on the traffic impact analysis submitted by the applicant through McKenzie Engineering. That it is not warranted to make those improvements on Hallie, in fact, there were no improvements. Required to serve this particular project, except for I believe some vegetation removal for a clear vision area.
Alright, that's all my questions for now, Frank.
Thank you, John. Anything else from any of the commissioners? Oh, Bert, yes, please.
Okay, thank you, Frank, uh, well, just following up, uh, we can probably hear a conversation about Hallie Lane. Um, and what uh can happen with that, uh, I guess this is a question to to Walt and and. Scott a little bit. Uh, was the traffic report the applicant's report, or was there a traffic engineer by the city who? Or uh, Public Works comment on that?
Uh, it was just made by McKenzie Engineering on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, uh, well, I've got a couple other uh comments and questions, well, first, I think it's really terrific what you guys have done here, so. Big supporter of this project, I have a a couple of questions. Uh, and it's uh, I think one, one thing that's really clear is that. You know, as uh indicated in the T S P plan, which this project is not subject to. The continuity of circulation in the city is really important to create a safe, walkable. You know, pedestrian-focused, bicycle-focused community. And so uh I kind of have a question, you know, that there'll be a natural inclination, obviously, uh, for people to walk and bike. Through this important link, really, because that's kind of a super block that we've got downtown, and this will really help that. Um, I wonder if the applicant could comment about uh pedestrians and bicycle access through the site. And and then also a question to uh Walt and Scott, uh, is there? Uh, any public access that could be a condition of approval for only pedestrian and bicycles through the site? That's one question, I have a couple of other uh questions.
Jim?
Uh, Nate, I think Nate, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, Jim, I I'm, we've talked a lot about bicycle, you know, racks and and locations for that, and then. Also, as you mentioned, Bert, the T S P is not, you know, uh, fully adopted yet, but we know that Third Street is going, you know, is is. Planned to be a a bicycle-heavy uh route, and so. Um, but Jim, did, I I'm forgetting, we were planning on a couple bicycle racks, you know, in a, in a few places for for promotion of that as well. Um, but I I'm just.
Yeah, I I think. I think one of the things Bert's hinting at is that that this street we're putting in, this private driveway we're putting it through, is going to be extremely attractive to people. To use as a way to transit the property to other parts of the city, and what Bert's probably wondering is, are we going to put no trespassing signs on the property? Or are we going to encourage people to come through and enjoy this amenity that we just created?
That, that's pretty much it, Jim, and and then it's a question to staff is, uh, I don't know what the limits of our uh. Conditions of approval can be, but uh, uh, could we uh, uh, put a condition of approval for uh public pedestrian? Uh, and bicycle easement or access.
Like an access easement?
Yes, but not, not vehicles, obviously, except for fire, obviously, it's an important fire and safety link also uh for our city.
Yeah, and this meets all the requirements that the Tillamook Fire District put out, or or the Hanby Fire Rescue put out for us. Um, but yeah, I I think the design intent is that this is a place where people can enjoy. This green space, not just the twenty-six families that own the houses. Um, so, as as it happens with developers, we don't necessarily want to give away a lot of easements to our property, but that could be a discussion, because. The 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 intent is that this is a place that everyone can enjoy.
Right, I think it's really just access easement through the site, uh, not necessarily that the public would have. Access to the green space.
Totally fine doing that, yeah.
Okay, that would be terrific, I think, and really improve the overall, you know, livability connectivity, especially for the neighborhood. Um, and then I guess the other question is, uh, and this, uh, this is probably a discussion, but there was, uh, as John pointed out, some. Uh, conversations or letters about uh Hallie and uh, you know, the. Street maintenance, uh, which, you know, essentially the homeowners are the ones that are pulling the freight on the street maintenance, it looks like. And so, uh, this is a a question, uh, maybe for discussion, but maybe to the staff in terms of, uh. A shared upkeep agreement or something like that, uh, so that the increased traffic. Uh, that, you know, happens on Hallie, which, you know, that's a fair number of cars, actually. Uh, compared to what it is now, uh, that there would be a pro-rata share for. Maintenance or upkeep or something like that of of Hallie, so that's a staff question.
So let me jump in there, uh, Bert, on that one, this is Dan over at Public Works. So we went rounds and rounds of looking at Hallie Lane, and if there was a way to essentially tie. Improvements or something to put on to as part of development, in which there is not. So Hallie Lane is a, is a public right-of-way, um, as rough as it is, it is considered essentially roughly a road. So it would be put on the city's um essentially plan to to redo the work if traffic, you know, moves in there. Um, right now, it's not been in in on our, uh, very high on our list, because unfortunately, we have much higher projects, so. But it actually is in the long-term C I P to essentially redo Hallie Lane. So, now if. The developer decides, you know, hey, I I want to improve it, we're not going to, uh, of course, say, no, 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 we'll want to talk with them a lot more if they. If so, choose to, but I can't, we don't have the teeth to force them to do anything with it.
Got it, so even even just, you know, keeping the gravel up and stuff like that, that's not within the realms of.
Nope, that falls, that will fall on our, on my staff.
Okay, alright, um.
Yep, and Bert, just to the, to that point, with the amount of construction that's going to go on there, you know what happens in a construction site and the roads around it.
Yeah, I I, my, my car has felt some of that, definitely. Uh, you know, other than that, I think it's a really fine proposal, you guys have done a lot of great work and, uh, really excited, hope we get some teachers and. Stuff that can live in Manzanita. That's all I have.
Thank you, Bert, Phil, anything from you, sir?
Uh, a couple of comments, thanks, Frank.
I noticed that in the staff report, uh, you make a mention of no time shares. What in your view is the difference between time shares and short-term rentals?
Are you asking me? I'm sorry, Phil.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. My experience is with the time share, um, it is purchased by an individual to use at certain times of the year. In other words, they're tied into using the building. I could think of, I think Mount Bachelor is a time share where you're allocated certain times of the year where you can use it. Short-term rental is you will have one person, one time, maybe another person, another time. It's a little bit more of a fluid market and you're only renting it. You don't have this continual responsibility for maintenance. Many a time share owner has been surprised with a multi-thousand dollar bill to help with the maintenance. That's not the case with the short-term rental. That's up to the individual property owner.
It, it, it makes me a little bit nervous that we are not coming out and hitting the nail right on the head, which is to say no short-term rentals. Uh, that's just a comment. Dan, if this project goes through and is approved, will it move Hallie up? And if so, uh, with regards to new construction or resurfacing? Will it move Hallie up on your uh, schedule of projects to do and how fast and how much?
Uh, Phil, I wish I could answer that question, but unfortunately I can't because we're going to have to look at the C I P. Um, one of the big projects on the C I P was the Classic Street. Um, but thanks to the hard work by uh, Leila, that project, you know, got a big financial kick from the state. So as long as that goes through, it might help push that project up forward, but I can't make any promises of when and how. So kind of goes back to right now, unfortunately, all of our transportation projects are unfunded projects in the city.
Well, I I have traveled uh, Hallie several times over the last couple of weeks and I'm I'm very hesitant to uh, think that in its present condition, it can take an additional thirty cars per day going essentially one way through that neighborhood. And Bert has touched on this and I think John too, uh, is there any way to where we can stop through traffic, people coming down Third and taking a right-hand turn? And taking a shortcut right through this neighborhood and then down to Alley? I, I would hate to see this turn into another through street, uh, where we an unintended consequence of the development is we increase traffic on Hallie even more.
Uh, I, well, I can give you my opinion. Um, one is my opinion is, you know, signage is going to be about your only thing, but my other part of my opinion would be is there might be some out of, out of the area people that might cut through once and hit that rough patch and go ew. Um, but most of locals are going to know that if they go just a little bit further down Edmund, like they do now, it's a nice paved road all the way across. So most times in that area, I see traffic go all the way down to Pacific Street and cut across to Carmel. So I don't personally think it's going to be as big of an issue. But that's my opinion on it, on it from just from visuals.
Okay.
No, go ahead, Jim.
Sorry, sorry, Phil. I did not mean to interrupt you, uh, but
Right ahead, Jim.
Okay. Not something worth adding to that is that in that through road, that one-way through that we're going to put with the, the, we intend to add traffic calming measures to that in form of that textured paving or whatever. So like Dan was saying, not only is Hallie going to be lumpy and bumpy and dissuading people to go through it, but you're going to hear noises on your tire and feel some vibration when you go over brick pavers or, or grass pavers as well. Not the point where you wouldn't want to do it, but the point where it wouldn't be as smooth as driving all the way down and going across Edmund. So I, I think I agree with Dan, like it's just something where locals yeah, new people would do it once and then locals would probably just know not to go that way because it's just a little bit faster to go all the way around.
Okay. Another question, uh, I'm a little nervous about not providing two parking spaces per structure. This was tried once before in a development that occurred five or six years ago and the planning commission held fast to the fact that we were going to require two parking spaces per structure. And it worked out really, really well. In fact, we had several comments from neighbors uh, written in on this project who have commented how well that project works. And in fact, it works because we held to the two parking spaces per structure. So my question is I can't scale the drawing that you had, Jim. It's too small on my computer. So I simply can't figure out how many additional parking spaces we could conceivably add by picking up the spaces available to us on Third Street and limiting them to parking pass or somehow or another guaranteeing that those spaces would be available for overflow for the fifteen spaces for these single bedroom units.
Um, I can answer that as far as the size. I, I, we have physical dimensions to maybe get six or seven cars as parallel parking on Third Street. However, well, however, I'm not a lawyer, but my, but I play one on TV. Uh, my, I, my spider sense tells me that I don't think we're allowed to assign streets in the public right-of-way as having spots assigned to something on private property. But that's something that probably Walt or Scott would have to talk to. But I have suspicion that we can't do that.
Well, I'm, I'm going to ask Dan to comment and then also uh, whoever from the city wants to comment and Walt, if he feels necessary. Is this possible?
No, so public right of way. Yeah, let her talk. I bow to that. Oh, so it's public right of way. So no, it belongs to the public. It can be used by anybody. It's first come, first served. So we don't allow for any type of sign to go out and say, hey, this, this spot's reserved for, you know, unit number three or something. So then answer that quite part of it.
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah, it may also, this might that's
This might be a good chat.
Sorry, Frank, I didn't mean to step on
Go ahead, Jim. No, you're fine.
I'd say this might be a good chance to maybe see if Andre, or sorry, if Brent, the transportation engineer has time to say to address, are you still on, Brent?
Yeah, I'm here.
Can you pitch in?
Yeah, yeah. So you're right, that, you know, six, six or seven spaces, you know, could be provided, you know, on street. And those would be open to anybody, but you know, at least the times I've been there, I haven't seen a lot of people using those spaces. But not only that, but when we did survey those three other sites in town, uh, even assuming there was one car in a garage, uh, we, we were around one vehicle per dwelling unit. And that's for, for, you know, uh, two-bedroom and, and up in larger units. So we, we expect that, you know, one unit on average is going to be about right for the smaller ones. And the other point here is because these will be either owner occupied or second homes. Not everybody's going to be there at the same time, right? They, they won't all be occupied every weekend. So most likely there'll, there'll be a few units that, that don't have any parking demand on any given weekend. Which, which are going to be the peak times anyway?
Right, and these are not
It's also
These are not four-bedroom homes where you've got six cars all, you know, coming together with fourteen people staying in a house. One bedroom, six hundred and fifty square feet cabins.
Yeah.
And I would just note too, um, that lower parking ratios are going to be part of what we're discussing over the next year. And they're with respect to the implementation of Senate Bill one oh six, uh, four oh six and the middle housing, um, Oregon's model middle, middle housing code, which has lower parking ratios. And so we're trending in that direction. And I know that that um, is just something that we should be thinking about when we're thinking about parking.
Tom, you've been a big uh, proponent of less parking. Some thoughts on this? Mr. Chris?
Thanks, Frank. I was just thinking about those. Um, this nation as a whole is, is got overly strict parking requirements and it is uh, driven and I think corrupted our land use planning for many years. And Manzanita is no exception to that. I, uh, I'm in favor of this project. I think it's great in large part because it has diminished parking. Putting free parking for this unit, uh, on a side street will do nothing except push parkers further down and then to some other location. It, it isn't needed, uh, and we should stop trying to um, plan everything so that there is free parking for the maximum number of people we could ever possibly imagine being on site at some particular time. These units are small enough. They don't need any more parking than they have. So I think it's, I think it's great and I, I would not, um, withhold approval of this project because we're worried that there isn't enough parking in it. So my views on that. I have some other questions though.
Please.
My turn. And sorry, I'm late to the meeting, so maybe you covered this at first, but what, what are we asking? What are we being asked to do here? I've told you I like this project as I see it on this design. Are we approving this? And if we do, does it stay like this or is it gonna?
Okay, I think
Can it change?
No, I think, I think, I think I could uh, answer that. What you're looking at here is a conceptual plan unit development project. Uh, the applicant is required to return to the planning commission with a final design plan. It will cover issues, I mean, details on landscaping. What else are they going to do with the open space? Uh, probably some elevation drawings for the type of housing. Um, make sure that they meet all the setbacks because some of the building heights may uh, require a little more setback. Uh, things on what will the picnic shelter look like? There will be details on the how they plan to uh, build and construct the uh, private uh, accessway here. So this is just a conceptual plan. The applicant also has intentions potentially to subdivide this property. Now, a subdivision is possible, but the application will need to be brought before the planning commission and that could be done as part of the final plan as well. So you're just looking at a conceptual plan. Can this project work as submitted? And I think the core of the direction of the staff report indicates that it certainly can. The details will be looked at with a second application.
Okay.
We're trying to get him off the starting gate, Tom.
Okay, got it. Uh, with respect to the, the later subdivision, I'm not sure I quite understand how that differs from what we have here. These units are going to be sold to individual people, right? And they will own the unit. And how does that differ from subdividing? What's there?
Actually, what you would do with the plan development, you would include, um, a plan development, the plat would just include the building footprint. With the subdivision, they would also have ownership of land around the building.
Got it.
So in other words, I have a backyard kind of thing as opposed to sharing all the open space.
Okay, so then one other question, realizing this is conceptual, but I'm the non-architect on the commission and non-restaurateur. When, when I'm looking at this, I see on the outside um, structures named garage units. And some of them footprint-wise are pretty big. What occurred to me is, is is this going to look like there's this big wall of buildings surrounding an interior residential area? Will, will, will those garage units set the residences apart from the adjoining community?
That's a very reasonable question to ask.
It looks sort of like gated community of sort, which is not something that I fancy.
Yeah, and that's, that's not, that's a great question. That's not really what we're going for. What that will come down to is kind of the massing of the buildings and having a, a variety of different shapes to make it not look like a wall of structures. This is just an example of one of the sort of preliminaries we looked at for one of the garage units. But if you look, there's, there's spaces between them and the tight, the visual tightness of that will depend on what the roof angles do and some other stuff like that. This, this spacing is not much denser than some of the other areas in town. Let's see. These are not good examples of what I'm thinking of. I don't have a good picture of what I was talking about.
Yeah, but John, you could, you could, or sorry, Jim, you can understand, go back to that picture for just a second, if you would.
This one?
Get a good sense is if you look at any of those pictures and look at the driveway, you know that the next house is right beside it. So we're looking at something very similar. You, you can see driveways everywhere here.
Yeah, like if you look at the closeness of these two structures
Yes.
And these two structures here and the two pictures on the left, that kind of thing is if you worry wall of building, like if it was a big row of townhouses, yes, that might look like it's a courtyard within. It's a gay community. But we're talking slightly this more on the scale of this where it's, it's more like, keep saying like old Manzanita, like back when it was a bunch of people that built beach houses and they didn't have much money because they were working hard jobs in the nineteen forties and they saved and they spent, they spent a thousand dollars to get a lot. And then they built a building out of driftwood they found, which is, I mean, there's still houses in Manzanita. They're built on post and pile. They don't even have real foundations. They're kind of kind of like old overs from an elder day. And we're kind of looking, I, I like, I prefer the thing in this development is sort of embracing that character, which is kind of different than what's going on in other places in Manzanita. Like, like for example, look at the lot that's just to the north of this one. I'm sure you guys know about that lot too. Like that's, that's the other way to go about doing this kind of project. And, and yeah, so your question is valid. Is it going to look like a gay community? We're not, we're certainly trying to avoid that by having, um, different kind of massing and spaces between the buildings. But we don't, but we also want to feel intentional. So we're going to have a common palette of design elements like we'll have a vocabulary of similar roof angles and similar textures and similar detailing and way we do the Wayne Scott. But, but by varying those, it's the kind of part idea. We'll have a, we can have a sort of visual texture of what the space is, so it all looks like it was intentional. But not make it so uniform that it looks like it's exclusive.
Okay, and so your, your planning to that effect is going to return to us at some later point in this process.
Yeah, so Walt was, Walt was hinting at is that this is, you're going to see us again. And when we come back, it's going to be with a lot more detail, including like more sophisticated engineering, more specifics about the buildings look like. Uh, this, having a meeting like this and getting approval like this from the planning commission is very useful to us because the developer's already, already put a great amount of expense into this. And he hasn't even really started paying expensive dues to do their thing yet. So knowing if that's, if, if, if the city is on board with what his vision is and what his dream is, that's really hel- helpful to him because that lets him know that he can un- unleash the forces of creativity and really make this thing, um, go from being a cool dream to something that's actually actionable.
Okay, and then one, one last question, then I'm done. Um, well, actually more of a comment. Uh, I, I agree with Bert that it is, is important that there be a pedestrian right-of-way on this middle road through, not be not because I want to access the amenities within, but just I, I don't want it again, a walled-off community excluding, you know, the, the general public. Um, I want to walk through there, not because I want to cut distances or anything, just because, you know, I walk around town and I want to walk through all parts of it and not feel that something is excluded. So I think if, if we need as a condition of approval that there be pedestrian and bicycle access, not, not anything else, at least on the, on the access road. That's really important to me. Thank you.
And Tom, to allay your fears, I think one of the hard things to do is to look at this what's on the screen in front of us with an overhead view and not feel the way you're feeling. what's on the screen in front of us with an overhead view and not feel the way you're feeling. But if we had a drop down street view, it would look like any other residential area with plenty of things separate. You got walkways, you've got driveways, you have that main cut through. The one way street where the cars will go through, it is not going to look like it's it's going to look like a residential street that has homes on it.
Non-exclusionary. Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna look like anything exclusionary.
Yeah, I would agree, Frank. A third street, you know, you had fifty foot lots there, you'd have six houses and they'd be, you know, taking up the whole site. So I think, you know, they're going to be ten feet to sixteen feet, depending on the height of the buildings between the buildings, and that's kind of what all of Manzanita is able to do.
Thank you, Bert. John?
I would encourage, Jim, you and the developers. First of all, I completely agree with your intent to get back to the if not the look, certainly the scale of old Manzanita. I'm you know, very judgy about what happened north of this site. And in other places around town as well. I I don't think Manzanita needs any more McBeach houses. But in terms of your kit of parts, while I kind of, I understand your point of view and from a constructability standpoint, I I think that's probably where you're coming from, but as much as possible, I'd go back to the picture you just showed and I I'd make them, certainly the six along Third Street, I would make them as unique as possible. You know, your your interior dozen and possibly the bigger units on the west, less important. But you know, try to try to go as unique as possible on Third Street. Completely agree with the concept. I love what you guys are doing. I think your parking with, you know, I have a little trepidation about the potential for short term rentals and how it will impact the parking, but besides that caveat, I think your parking is probably reasonable at one to one for the interior fifteen units. I agree with Bert and Tom and Frank and everybody else that's opened their mouths. Yeah, we need pedestrian and probably bicycle access along Halle Lane. Whether you give it to us or not, it's probably going to happen. And I think the developer who's not in my screen right now, but I think he would agree with that and kind of wants the wants the Heron's Rest to kind of have that community flavor. So, you know, good on all of you. I think I think I'm in favor of what you're doing and wish you luck. Hope it happens as soon as possible.
Thank you. And just to clarify, yeah, we are more than happy for pedestrian and bicycle access and and yet we are not looking to be a closed off community at all. So the design process, you know, with with adding that easement or and really just kind of the the feel of everything.
Right.
We we fully intend to.
It sounded as you were. It sounded as if you were, Nate. And I appreciate it.
Hey, Walt, on something like this, would it be necessarily to have an access easement or would it just be that they don't have any restrictions? Is it six of one, half dozen of the other?
Well, they can always put a sign there that says, public access for bicycles and pedestrians only. And I'm sure they can come back with their final plan that shows that type of signage.
Okay.
I think. I assume they don't want people wandering around the you know, the backyards and things and and I think you know, it's very generous of them to give it to us and we ought to keep it to the street as poss, as much as possible or adjacent, street adjacent, let's call it.
Yeah, I this is probably all part of the commissioner discussion section, but I for one would want to have a a permanent easement because things change in over time.
Okay, ownership could change also. Yeah, schedule memorialize that kind of thing.
Right. Walt, I have a question for you.
Sure.
And maybe this is for Dan and Scott and Leila at all. Would we prefer the units be platted or just the P U D? Or is there, is there a is there a reason to go one way or the other from the city's standpoint? From my perspective, no, you're still going to wind up with twenty seven single family, twenty six twenty six single family homes. And the layout as is, whether or not there's invisible lines on the ground that delineate ownership is really immaterial. Leave that up to the applicant and there's a cost involved with that as well. So I'm sure they're going to be thinking about that. But conceptually, as it stands, this certainly qualifies as a planned unit development and meets those requirements.
All right. Anything else, John?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I would just like to say also that I'm less concerned about the parking. In fact, I'm not concerned about the parking. I'm more concerned about some of the water issues that have been experienced by some of these side streets or connecting streets and the condition of Halle Lane after construction and what that's going to be like. So going forward, those are some of the things I think we need to focus on. At this point, are there any persons in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the proposed development? If you are speaking in favor, please raise your hand. If you're not speaking in favor, don't raise your hand until we get to the comments opposing. In favor, Parker, if you would make sure you're unmuted, please.
Hello, I just wanted to take a chance to express my support for this project. It is rare that you see these types of units being developed for sale in Tillamook County. These would be some of.
Parker, if I may just, would you please introduce yourself for those that may not be familiar with your position?
Thank you and apologies. My name is Parker Sammons. I am the housing coordinator for Tillamook County. And I wanted to express my support for this project, especially because it represents some of the most affordable homeownership opportunities that have been presented in Tillamook County in many years. I've also written a letter and all my other thoughts are there. But this is a great project and Nate has demonstrated himself to be a very principled developer throughout all of my experiences with him and his projects.
Thank you, Parker. Ben Rosenberg, please. Ben, unmute yourself so we can hear you.
Hi, it's it's Kim Rosenberg.
Oh, hi, Kim. Screen says Ben, but hi, Kim.
Hi there. So I'm really in favor of this project. We, my husband and I opposed it back in twenty seventeen. Nate and Scott Emholt have been communicative, responsive to our neighbors. They've gone through many iterations of different plans. They've met with us as a group. We, my husband and I live in a five hundred and fifty square foot, single level home just around the corner from them. Our home's just a little bit smaller than the proposed homes from Heron's Rest. We share a car. I I don't see that there will be a problem with parking. I know we get real busy in the summer over a couple of weekends a year, but that's not a reason to dedicate so much space to parking when this seems to be a perfect kind of development to draw mid middle income or not middle income, but middle housing to our to our town. It's totally possible to share a car if you're a married couple and most of these houses, I believe, are going to be one bedroom in the the fifteen units. Someone mentioned their concern about some of the units being short term rentals. But if fifteen of the units won't be allowed to be short term rentals and there's an HOA, it seems really unlikely that those eleven other units are going to be, you know, if they're voting on it, that that would be allowed to that would be something that would be allowed for any of the folks that buy a home there. They'll be buying a home knowing they're sharing parking, knowing that they are not going to have garages unless they choose a garage unit. I I think it's a fabulous plan for the city and I will be looking forward to hearing how they plan to deal with the water issues that we've had trouble with, but I know from neighbors on the north side of our street that they've spoken already with some different types of solutions. And I I think that that could they've just been wonderful at communicating and responding to our neighbors and and I hope that this is approved so that they can get on with it. That lot has been empty since twenty sixteen when the tornado hit and they logged. So thank you for your time today. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Kim. Linda, if you would unmute yourself.
Good afternoon. Oh, wrong Linda. Which Linda? Linda Kessner?
I'm sorry, Linda Kussner. I'm sorry, Linda Kussner.
That's me. Okay.
Okay, you're right.
I should have looked at the participants. Yes, I'm Linda Kessner. I live in Manzanita. I am in favor of this project as well. I didn't have an opportunity to send in a letter, so I just wanted to record my pro stance and many of the points were already were already iterated in those letters. Definitely in favor of more middle housing and more opportunities for housing fluidity. As a person who's liking to retire and lives in a family sized home, I would like a smaller place that I could afford to move to. So this is a great opportunity for many people who would like to stay in or move to Manzanita and are not able to do so today. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And now are there comments from the public in opposition to the development? And if there are, you could raise your hand now to speak. Okay. Denning? Is it Connor?
Yeah, I can go first. So I live at one, or I don't live, we have a second house at one nine eight Halle Lane. As part of that email earlier today that it sounds like many of you guys saw. I guess one of our primary concerns was grading of the property. It seems like it's currently sand out there that has a property graded right now. It is slightly above grade of our property and we've had some sand blowing off into our property and then also some water runoff onto our property. I guess generally we're heavily in support of the development. We think that area needs a good development, but grading was one of our primary concerns with the potential of sand and then other whatever other sediment is used and then water running off onto our property.
Jim?
Yeah, this was, yeah, thank you. I just put the, it's one of the, the safe plan that's got the contours on it back up. And I put it there so that our civil engineer would have something to talk about when he starts talking. I hear he's ready. It's all you.
Thank you, Jim. My name is Andre Ternishaw with HBH Consulting Engineers. Prepared the civil engineering design, which includes the grading and the stormwater and and the the site utilities. So as you can see there in the lower left hand corner is the the existing low point with the contours around thirty six feet. And the intent there is to have a a parallel driveway that runs north, south. That'll most likely have maybe a valley gutter down the middle or along the sides that'll catch any kind of stormwater runoff that processes the site. So that any kind of stormwater or sand or whatever it is that's coming across the site gets collected and goes into a a catch basin there. And it'll be slightly lower than than the nearby neighboring property line so that stormwater ends up going into the sediment basin, catch basin, and then eventually into the infiltration chamber, which would then infiltrate into the ground. And and then eventually if there's a bigger storm flow down into the stormwater system, eventually into the city's public stormwater system. So that that should prevent any kind of stormwater flowing onto the neighboring properties.
Understood. Thank you. Can you guys just make, can we just make sure that we have some sort of grade at the at the one nine eight Halle property line? Just to, just to confirm that the low point on the property is below our our property line.
Yeah, as we move on with more more detailed engineering plans, we'll definitely show existing elevations along the neighboring properties. So it's kind of clear as to what that is relative to what our elevations are on our site.
Perfect. Thank you.
Connor, that's something that the planning commission, as well as the city council and everybody involved in this project will be monitoring as this project progresses.
Sounds great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And I just see it's another Denning. I don't have a first name on it, though.
Yeah, that's Linda. I'm the one that spoke up out of turn earlier and I apologize for that.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for reading the letter that our family submitted. And I do want to reiterate that in general, we do support this plan and the design and the thoughtfulness that was put into it. And in hearing everything from this call, it was nice to hear some of the concerns in my letter already addressed. So the parking and the short term rental limitations, while it's not clearly spelled out that the single units with no garages do not have the potential for rental, I think that is clear now. And if there's language that can be put into anything, that would be great. So that goes on into perpetuity. But to address a couple of things that still are on there, I know that the paving of Halle Lane was brought up quite a bit, including some of the commissioners from this call. And I think I heard from a couple of people saying it's already a rough road and they've traveled down that street. And with our concern of additional vehicles, even during the construction of this development, perhaps using that road even more, that is going to wear and add additional wear and tear onto Halle Lane. We as homeowners have spent money purchasing gravel to fill in existing potholes just to get to our property at the end of the road. So with increased traffic, no matter what it is, there's going to be gravel spraying up. There's going to be damage done to to the road. And it's my understanding from the Nahala Bay Transportation System Plan that it states that owners wishing to build access to their property on unimproved rights of way must adhere to the city standard and hoping that that language is put into place for something such as this development when trying to connect on to an existing road. It would be great to see Halle Lane paved from the development to Carmel where it meets back up to the regular road. And it would be nice for that to be a priority. And I don't know if it's something that the development would consider taking on to alleviate some of the pressures that are put on to to the street. And then the other thing that was addressed that we noted on one of the plans was a water manifold that was also shown to be right in front of our property. And I'm wondering why that isn't on the developments property. So we are requesting that that water manifold be moved on to the developments property or if that's something that needs to be considered.
Hang on, Linda. Jim, go ahead.
I was actually gonna say Dan could probably answer that better than me, but you're actually not allowed to put city meters on private property. They have to stay in the right of way. Isn't that correct?
That is correct, Jim. So yes, even though on the picture it shows this big manifold in there, it won't be such a thing. More than likely, it will be one, what we call kind of a vault. But essentially, it's one large meter box that several meters will be placed. It'll have to be placed at a graded level, so and it has to be load rated. So if anything, it's going to probably create near, right near the property line. So it'll bump up against it. So it should be slightly out of your driveway area. And then they'll have to do a little bit of concrete or pavement around the outside of it to flush it out to also support it. So it's not as big as it looks like on that drawing because I looked at that drawing and I can see where a big concern would come into place.
Linda, any other questions?
Uh, no, not at this time. I think, you know, again, the consideration that'll be put into these plans, I think you guys have already addressed some of those and I think these are top of mind for you as well. So thank you for your attention to this matter.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Sure, thank you.
And there are a number of other letters that were received and considered by the commission. Those are posted on the website. The applicant, if you have anything else you'd like to respond to at this point for anything that was raised by members of the audience?
I I would just like to say I'd say thank you for giving us the time to to make this presentation and also for being willing to consider it. We've been excited about this project for seventeen, almost seven years now, and it would be really awesome to get it underway. Everybody's raring to go. All we need is your blessing, basically. Thanks.
Okay, Nate, you're good? Yeah, I just, Walt has alluded to it a few times, but Yeah, I just, Walt has alluded to it a few times, but just to make it very clear, we do a plan on coming back as soon as we possibly can with the subdivision plan. And so we can get moving on this. I think we're all excited to, to get working. All right, very good. Thank you, Nate. I will now close the public comment portion of this discussion. We'll invite discussion by the commission. If commission members have any questions of the applicant, audience members or staff, we're now at the point where the discussion will be limited primarily to the commission members. If you have any follow ups. If our commissioners are good. Okay, then we're good. So our options at this point are now, considering the planning commission's determination on the application, we are going to need a motion to one of the four options. Approve the application adopting findings and conditions contained in the staff report. Approve the application adopting modified findings and or conditions that we've listed. The only one that we really made note of is public pedestrian access easement. That's the only thing I have. We could deny the application establishing findings as to why the application fails to comply with any decision criteria. Or we could continue the hearing to a date and time certain, which certainly seems unnecessary. Bert, unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'd like to accept the staff report with an amendment for a pedestrian and bicycle easement be included for the lane between Hallie and Third with signage in place identifying that public access easement.
And we do have the owners of the property or the, the developers on, on record as saying that they agreed with that. So that shouldn't be an issue. Do we have a second?
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
I second.
So John has a second. Any discussion before we vote?
I, I just think it's so important to have these small units in our community. And, you know, the, the parking issue, it, it's challenging, but you know, our code at the moment requires two spaces for a studio apartment. That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
I think, you know, this is an exciting project. It's important for our community and we need more of them. So congratulations to a really terrific project for our community.
Hey, what Bert said.
Thank you, John. Ditto. With no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Zero? Unanimous, five zero? That we pass along the, approve the application with the one contingency.
And with the, with the added comment, we encourage you to make haste, bring it back to us as soon as possible.
Yeah, well, we've helped that process along by getting them in under the a hundred and twenty day clock that's ticking furiously. Leila, anything else?
No, I would just say that we approved the contract for our comprehensive plan consultant last week, city council did. So expect to execute that this week and get started. We selected three J consulting, which you know, Scott Friganesi serves as our contract planner. So he'll also be leading that project for us, but we got a super competitive field of folks that applied for that and it was an embarrassment of riches is how I, I called it. So we're on the, we're rocking and rolling towards that. And city council will be hearing the first round of TSP ordinance amendments at their meeting on Wednesday and I expect that to go before council probably sometime for our first reading of the ordinance in July.
Good to hear. Phil?
Frank, we skipped over approving the minutes.
Thank you, Phil. Oh, that's what Scott was trying to tell me. Yes. Uh, let's see. Where was that on my sheet? Uh, number two. On the agenda.
It may not have been on your script, Frank, so I think.
Oh, you know what it wasn't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's probably true. You did a marvelous job. So you just, I think would ask, I think it's on the agenda. Actually don't have it up. Just for a motion to approve the minutes from the April, right, meeting?
Previous.
Are there any?
No, it was March.
March, because we didn't.
March. Sorry, we canceled April. So March, there's any changes or additions to the minutes, otherwise just ask the commission for a motion to approach.
I will so move.
Phil has moved to accept the April, no, March.
I will second it on condition you spell my name correctly in section Roman rule three.
Again?
It's a rite of passage to have your name spelled in the minutes. So Bert's been there.
It allows me to grow, draw attention to myself every time we need to.
It's the auto.
That's right.
It's the auto.
Must, I bet it was. We'll correct that, Tom. Thank you. And I apologize.
Otherwise, I'm fine. I'm fine with the minutes.
Moved in second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? And I don't, I don't believe there was anything else on there. Was there, Scott? Uh, no, that was everything we had. And just as a general update, we do not have any applications. That'll be coming before the planning commission. Right now it's kind of quiet. Okay. Well, City Center Development, thank you for being here today, explaining everything that you're about to do or, or planning on doing. And we appreciate your time and good luck with everything going forward. And I believe if, if that is everything, then we're about to adjourn unless there's any last minute concerns.
One, one last thing, I'd just like to say that Frank, you did a wonderful job chairing the meeting in Aaron's absence. I, I miss her and she does a great job, but you handled it well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, and Karen, Karen, we miss you. Our hearts are with you. On that note, at five thirty eight, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.